Two things our media needs that will affect what we do here.
Right.
One, having the ability to have that twenty-four hour coverage. If it's not someone like myself or Scott that live in this area, to have someone here at the station. So you have that immediate response. To have that, you gotta have the facilities to have that. Putting them in here right now with the way it's designed is not acceptable because we don't have a separation. With that plan of doing separation, we would have to get a consultant and look at what we're gonna do as far as the design was cost effective. But putting a temporary trailer to the outside, wait till the CSD is relocated, if they go to this option, and then the space completely changes. Then we look at the build out from there for, from that. It's volunteerism, immediate need for coverage. This facility being able to accommodate that is, is what we're focused on.
So, as much as I hate to say Band-Aid, I almost like the idea of the older modular remodel concept.
But we're not against that at all.
We're not against it.
And we did watch that, it here's the photographs.
I wasn't done though. Wasn't done. It wouldn't take that long to remodel a module.
No, it would.
So it could actually be used as office space.
It has, it would be living space. Because we can't live in this building.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But until you have somebody to live here.
We would have to be.
As well, that would be.
We would want to. I'm sorry.
I think they could get them quickly if they had a place for us.
We would recruit from Templeton Fire, we've recruited from Camp Roberts Fire, we've recruited from Passover. Whoever is willing to come and do coverage for a rate.
I see what you're saying.
We're not saying we're gonna grab our community members and put them there, because they already live here.
Right.
So we would have, that would relieve the burden that we carry in front of.
Is he available seven days?
That brings in people that we don't have to.
They're already trained.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the cost associated with that?
We looked at this option right here.
It's a possibility.
We would have to move it if it's being offered out basically, then we move it. But the condition of, uh, we're looking at ten thousand dollars to make it.
I understand that. I meant the cost associated to hiring firefighters to spend the night here.
We have, we have the.
Budgeted, it's budgeted.
Rate numbers. And it would be based on our coverage rates that we currently go by.
So, but they're public employees, aren't they? Are you talking about volunteers down there?
They would, they would be here on like a reserve firefighter basis. They're already set for it, it was budgeted. And there's so many days out of the year that we have in the budget to cover for someone to be here.
So we're not paying count per's and.
No, 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 no. Basically, it's minimum wage plus the, the call rate.
Yeah.
That's, it's minimum wage is what it is.
Twenty-four hours.
For twenty-four hours, so they would get like two hundred and sixty bucks to stay here twenty-four hours.
Plus any calls they go on.
Plus any calls. And the calls will be based on, on their, their rate that we have assigned a rate. So they would receive the between sixteen and nineteen dollars for an hour of call, or two dollars for a digital.
We, we have to make it attractive enough that someone would be willing to be there.
Right, you understand that.
And.
I like it for the training.
Just like yours, the reserve firefighters, the ISO requirements, may have to respond to finally coverage. Or is that considered volunteer still?
I don't know.
Versus eight, versus full-time volunteer.
Well, it changes your ISO rating once you venture from volunteers into full-time paid.
Right.
We're down to high rate of volunteerism, basically. It's a paid position, but it would require to have a response within a certain amount of time on our ISO rate.
Because I have to volunteer.
Sure.
When that's in jeopardy, then it doesn't affect it.
No, I'm, I'm just saying though, by having reserve firefighters, their coverage, would that help improve the.
I was gonna let you guys take a look at it. We did give it to the board, but I took it back, so it's just for conversation.
That's a huge step.
I really have not, I just don't.
So the only thing that I'm still not happy about is the traffic going down. And I'm just gonna put it out there. I, I would not object to directing staff to move forward with placing one job out there.
The only thing on, on that traffic, and, and I'd say the way that we could address it, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four thirty, is through our billing, through our payment process, we have a drop station, having a payment location other than down there like up here. Those are the things that we could do to eliminate it. Other than bill paying, the people that walk in here looking for general information, that would still be here. We can't eliminate all that traffic, obviously. I don't know how big, I don't think there would be that much of a, of traffic impact on a daily basis.
Can we, can we not wait any longer and, and ask the community? Can we go out there and ask them?
It's based off.
Instead of sending them a letter, can we start somewhere? I know, I know you're trying to get a hold of the HOA. But, but I would rather get an opinion from the people individually than one person that represents them. Cause he may just tell you to go, you know.
No, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do with the HOA is get times that they're reading, asking for it.
I see.
Not necessarily asking, because he probably tells them.
Right, right.
The only thing I have to think of is.
That's a good plan.
Public education, so they fully understand instead of hearsay, because we know how that different. Is, is be direct, be open, be communicating and explaining to them, yes, there, there is an impact, but everything can be done to eliminate it, you know, with all our options.
Do we know what the date of their meeting is?
I believe it's the twenty-third of April, January.
January twenty-third. And.
Yeah.
And are, do they have a December meeting?
No.
No, they do not.
Can we get word out to them prior to, I mean, once we find out if we can be invited to talk to them? I'd like to get something in the mail to them so they can.
It's at Lilian Marshals School and it's open.
Okay, I'd like, my point is though, I'd like to get the information to them prior to.
So the.
So they're prepared to, they can think about it and.
So the intent was to have a presentation for them.
Right.
At their meeting. But we can definitely give, make a packet up and distribute it to all the homes over there.
Prior to it.
And we can distribute it to all the homes along those access paths. But we were waiting partially to talk to the HOA president to get.
Permission.
Get permission to cover their meeting. The other aspect was really whether or not you guys are really committed to allowing us to move the district offices there. Because if you guys said, you know what, no, we're just not gonna do that, then there's no sense in bothering. We would still bother the HOA because we've already retrieved a plan right next to them, that the rest of the people would kind of.
I'm not opposed to exploring all the options, but I'm not in favor of it.
Well, one, one thing on, three options on the fire department. It moves forward with the plan that I spoke to you about. That, that this goes through and those offices end up down there and, and that whole thing takes place. Once they're out of here, then we start the process of.
I understand.
This, and there would be room if a, if the ATB was built. And then there would be room in front for the CSD business, the payments and that stuff, just like the reception area. There would be room here for that. There would be no reason for them to go down there.
But he's opposed, Kelly's opposed to that. He would rather have everybody in one house and.
Well, let me back, let me back that up just a step. They go down there and that presents a problem. I'm not trying to say address it after it's a problem, but we do everything you're talking about. And if it, if it's not working, you, we still have an option to take.
Undo it.
To undo that piece of it.
Right.
Yeah.
So like, just so we're clear, Mike.
So once we get them used to going down there, we're gonna let them run out there and do that?
Well, my issue with leaving one person here as to take payments is the remodeling necessary in the front office to do that, to make it safe for that one person to be here, is, is gonna take up that whole space and gonna tie up that whole space. So it's not like you're gonna do that in general for a reception area. You're gonna do that for that reason and that reason alone.
You know, that one person taking money.
And then, you know, the days we're.
By themselves taking money, right.
I mean, generally, there's at least two or three people here because we're all in the same office.
There will be fires.
But the person that takes the money needs to lock the door when they leave to go with you to a fire. Cause you're not gonna be here. They'd be here. And if there's an incident, they're gonna take the cash here with them.
I'm hoping that that is no longer the case where there's.
We can't base that on the person.
I'm just talking about what it is right now.
And that's, that's part of the problem is now we're all in the same building. So if, if she leaves, then there's somebody else here.
Right.
But if she leaves, in the future, if she's doing that, then everything's locked up.
Back in fifteen minutes.
She's gotta close everything down and lock everything up. And she's back in fifteen minutes, maybe two hours, maybe.
Right.
She doesn't come back for four or five days. You know, the. But the, besides that person being there by themselves with no backup. She works constantly with Tamara to get her job done. They work together to get all kinds of tasks done. So now, you don't have one person over here, you have two people here. And you can see how tight it is in the front right now. So they really need, if they're gonna stay in this kind of situation, they would need more space than what they have. Which means that now you're cutting even deeper into the fire station, which we're trying to back out of. To allow them the room they need to grow and be prosperous in their activities. So, maybe that's not the, you know, fifty-year product, you know, product that we need to plan for. Maybe that's the office space, maybe it is a five or ten-year product. And in ten years, hopefully this commercial space is built out and we can move those offices back downtown and have a meeting room and an office downtown.
I think if you put the sheriff at that location, you could possibly get money from the county and you can build to suit for what the sheriff wants. And if the sheriff's down there, I don't think anybody's gonna be complaining about having your sheriff driving through the neighborhood.
No, I don't.
Very smart.
Well, they're driving through there anyway, so.
Right.
And you sell it to the public like that, we're providing a additional load service, we're having a sheriff down there. And it's the downside, is there maybe a few more cars running down your street and you still gonna have sheriff.
Is there consensus on directing staff and how to move forward?
Can I just say one thing also? If I'm understanding, the sheriff, what they, they want their apartment, but they also want a place to make the interview suspected criminals, suspects, what have you.
They did say, they didn't want to bring any criminals or anything, they wanted interview.
Interview, I'm sorry, interview.
Yeah, just.
Great people, witnesses.
Witnesses, they would not have any.
Because.
Holding.
Holding.
Or detention, that's all.
They're making it safe.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
Safe, locked up for their computers and their equipment.
Yes.
If you got a blank canvas down there, you build to suit, you build them the office they want, the door they want, the terminal they want.
But ask them.
The access they want.
Where do they want it?
And they probably, and they probably dropped seventy-five million grand on it. The county would.
Sell them a drug.
Share it with them.
John Frishon made a.
Joe wouldn't sell those cameras.
John Frishon made a statement that if we were to design the area for them, that he could get.
He can fund, he can fund the sheriff's budget.
To, for money to help support with that. All he did say was, he's an elected official with a limited term. So.
He is running.
So you need to, you need to think about these things and, you know, ten-year plan might not work with his duration.
I, I support the idea of, of the sheriff can get funding to put it down, put it on the sewer plan and build it to suit.
I have a question about, and I brought this up last time, about the use of the rooms that are there. I know in this building, sewer, water, they don't get charged for their space in this building. But what's gonna happen down there with the lighting, the solid waste?
And the water.
And the water.
It's gonna be split.
They're going to have building offices down there, okay? There'll also be CSD offices, called CSD, because they, like Tamara's, there's a CSD office space as compared to a water space.
Fire won't be down there.
No, fire will not be down there, fire will be here.
Lighting will be there.
Yes, and what they said cost going to be.
So it'll probably be, it'll probably be a forty-five, forty-five, ten?
That's typical.
Something like that.
That's typical for the expenses, the operating expenses. But what's their cost going to be for the space that they're in?
To build it?
To build it or to lease it from wastewater or what?
Are we, is the district leasing this office space from the fire department? Shh. Why would that happen?
So essentially, the utilities are not paying anything other than their share of the bills to stay here. We're not renting space. We're not, you know, paying other than paying a share of the, the bills.
But why do you go?
If, if we were to go forward with that particular case, then the cost to build those additional rooms, the general manager, um, the meeting room, part of the account manager's office, the spaces that are not tied to water or wastewater would be allocated over everybody. The ones that are tied directly to water.
So there'd be formula.
Water, we would have to figure out everybody's contribution.
There'd be a formula.
Going into the future, that most of the functions that would happen there are water, wastewater, lighting, or solid waste. Because we wouldn't have a fire office there. But.
So you have a fire training ground though.
So utilities, all the costs associated with moving. With the, taking care of that building would be borne by all of the departments that are in it.
That's just twenty years' worth of meetings in there.
So we would have to re-allocate our costs.
So, I'm not sure I totally understood Kelly. What I'm wanting to know is, beyond, beyond the operating causes, costs, before operating costs that had to be built. So, say my office is a ten by ten and I'm lighting. Well, I have to pay a proportional, I being lighting, pay a proportional cost for the building itself. So that when we're having a loan, for instance, is there a portion of that loan that lighting is responsible for? Or that any of the other water, solid waste are responsible for contributing to?
I would say so, because it's gonna permanently house it there.
It's gonna be like a.
So there'll be a formula.
That's what I would expect, not what happened here, but that's.
That's what we're doing now.
They'll, they'll have to come up with a formula that's. Figure out how many square feet are being used by each.
We'll know how much that building costs. And to answer the building cost question, most likely, we would identify the rooms or spaces that are not, not related to wastewater at all. And then the other departments would pay a share or completely pay for those spaces based on a per square foot cost. Going into the future, the maintenance costs would be spread across everybody. We obviously, you know, the, we don't have individual people for all the individual apartments, so, you know, most of the rooms are shared. Most of the functions of the utilities are water and sewer. So they're gonna predominantly carry the burden of the maintenance. The, my suggestion would be in the beginning, when we build the building, that, you know, cause water's gonna have a higher share than obviously lighting and solid waste, is that that dollar amount is set out in the beginning and then they either make payments to pay that back to wastewater or they just play, pay a flat rate in the beginning to pay that back.
Be like a square footage, probably?
Based on square footage. So then, the, the cleanest thing would be that they make one payment and say, that's my contribution to this building. And then going forward, everybody pays towards payments.
I have a question on the beat station. So, we have stated that it's potentially viable that county would help offset the cost of building it out at the wastewater treatment plant building. Would the same not apply if it were here? Because it's ultimately gonna be built out to suit.
The money, the money wasn't for specific location, is my understanding. It was for, to help the district if we wanted to move in that direction of offering a station.
My concern is that how is it different? They still have to go through a gate that's locked. They still have to shut off of an alarm unless their, their space is separate from, from that.
Well, I guess.
I, I think they're gonna have the same issues as if they're going to the school, other than the fact that it may not be cut. The school's probably not customized to their needs.
Right, ideally, in that third scope that we have, the twenty-year plan projected out for the fire department, the sheriffs would have a beat station in the front of the building with their own access. So they would not have access to the rest of the building, with the exception of them coming in to choose the restroom.
The thing about it being down here that attracted them was high visibility. Everybody driving through sees they're in town. Then if anybody needed their services, they were very accessible. And plus, if something went down in town, cause one thing they asked to do was put cameras either in before they had the one in front of the door. But they wanted to be able to see Eleventh Street and Mission Street. Because if anything happens, those are very popular locations for potential suspects or victims to travel and they would be able to record.
Catch it by camera.
And, and so it was very highly desired for them to have something in this area.
I'd need more climate support to have a beat station in this building as opposed to the new building.
I don't oppose that at all, but it's.
So, does anybody have a suggestion or a direction? I, I, I'm leaning towards this modular. And I'm leaning towards getting information out to the neighborhood and getting into their January twenty-third meeting. And I'd like to direct staff to go that way if there's a consensus.
I agree with that.
Modular is time-sensitive, so there's a window.
I think getting it is probably a good idea, because it puts us on a path to getting staff. And filling the fire needs that we need to fill.
And then we can address the rest of this as we hope, gives us, provides us a lot of time.
Absolutely. And it would be one of our first steps regardless, because until something's done any fashion with the CSD, we need to, we need that need on the firepower side right now. That would take care of it until either the CSD moves or something's done.
Is there anyone else that wants to go down?
The modular location would be here.
It's basically put to the north right behind, right, or to the north of the generator. And utility hookups are fairly simple. It could be run on a power whip for, you know, plug and play. The water and wastewater would have to be, you know.
Can it share the generator?
What's that?
It will share the generator?
It would be, no. No, I guess if it was plugged into the building power, it would be on the sewer and on the generator as well. So it would get set up for emergency power, it should be set up for emergency power. It's about thirty, what'd we say, thirty-four feet by ten feet wide. It needs some work, but it's, it's a good option and it would help out the pleasant value of school.
How's that affect the parking lot?
We would put it lengthwise, we wouldn't really take up any more.
With the dumpster line.
From the dirt.
It stands a generator against the back of the lot.
Okay, okay.
So people would have to drive around it, unless there are anything, it would be on the back of the lot and.
It'd be the back of the building, straight back.
Long ways, that's why.
You'd be able to get through.
And stuff they could do.
You'd be able to get around it into the alley?
Yeah, you'd just have to go to the north to get around it, thirty, thirty more feet.
But we'd be keeping our tree, right?
Yeah, the tree.
The tree. And be on the upset of the generator.
I'm just making sure we be keeping our trees, right, Anthony? You've got me on that one? Okay.
You guys think?
Yeah, I, I support putting in the modular for the fire staff. And also, we're putting in the, the CSD temporary offices at the wastewater treatment plant, but working towards concept three as presented in this report. Working towards not doing it. And also getting the, finding out who's gonna get, get in money.
Yeah, we're looking into all those things. I think once that project is moving forward at full steam, then it would be time to start pulling the trigger on the button. We're gonna plan for this building, so when, when everything's moved, we could start moving forward.
I also have on here, coming back to you guys with plans for each of the departments, mainly the ones you don't have like fire, about what the immediate need is towards master plan will be. I mean, this covers a lot of it, but.
Yeah, we, we definitely need more detail on the fire master plan and dealing up, you know, with the role of the district and where we're hitting twenty years from now. Like your ideas.
Is there any board comments?
Yes. Anyone else wants to go?
I just wanna make sure you guys, do you know what?
Anyone else wanna go first?
The consensus is, we all know what's going on?
I thought we presented to go after the, the modular.
Okay.
And to.
Ross got it.
Contact the neighborhood.
Go to the HOA.
And continue forward with that plan.
And get information on consultants, like.
And I thought they were, yeah, pricing consultants.
Talk to his buddy that kinda does that, maybe agree.
Get an idea of what it would cost.
Does staff understand?
Contact the HOA.
Anything else? We're not.
He has a board comment, but he's letting everyone else go first.
Yep.
We just wanna make sure we have everything, do you guys want us to?
I think. All right, we need four consultants.
Clear direction.
What's your board comment?
Okay.
Okay.
Deep sides.
Actually, I have some.
Did you give me a copy?
Uh, I'm gonna email you it. Can you have this too? Good evening, I've spent nearly every day for the last three months going over the property tax data for our community.
Wait, 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 slow down, I'm sorry, I got so excited. You are.
Good evening, I have spent nearly every day for the last three months going over the property tax data for our town. With data provided by the county, I have reviewed every single neighborhood and property. The data shows that our taxing system have, I wrote, is broken, but it has issues. Under our current system, we have neighborhoods paying more for the services such as fire than other neighborhoods. And some neighborhoods aren't even paying taxes for services that they receive in this community and provided by this district. The community was brought down into nine separate neighborhoods. Some contribute twenty-two percent of their property taxes to the CSD. One contributes nineteen percent and half contribute barely above nine percent. This has resulted in a past financial struggle for the community and unnecessarily high taxes for many property owners. This system has little to do with Prop thirteen, has been in place since the CSD was formed. Is expected to get worse as the community grows. Our current taxing system is also extremely fragile and result in another fiscal emergency for the district if the housing market collapses again. We cannot ask for a tax readjustment. The Templeton CSD has already asked for that and were rejected. As a result, our taxes have gone up to meet their shortages. I have worked to create a legally viable tax system that would address the financial needs of the community in the current term and long term and falls terms of Prop thirteen. I spoke to Mr. Roberson about this. This system will lower property taxes for an overwhelming majority of the property owners by as much as forty percent. This system also provide new services for the community and possibly create a path to incorporation as the community grows and encourages new businesses to move to San Miguel. I humbly present to you, the board, a new system that would request a staff review of it to confirm its legality if it is legally viable to move forward with it. And that's, this lovely thing.
You wanna change?
Legally viable with all the HCO codes.
You wanna change the property tax system, is that?
Our taxing system, I want to make sure that it's reformed, so we're getting apartment, the right.
So you're talking about undoing Proposition thirteen?
I would not suggest a new.
Okay, so I don't know exactly why, we don't have any authority over.
We do. And that's why, actually, I looked through it, I saw the code that would let us do this. That would not undo Prop thirteen, they wanted to protect it. And I wrote it all up and I have a written proposal, it's followed by the guidelines in their state code.
So would the board have consensus to have legal look over this?
It's just, it's really, I mean, I wrote the part, but it's like two pages.
Yeah, it wouldn't take much, I just.
Wouldn't it take the county being involved?
One step at a time though.
One step. I'm just happy it is the thing is viable.
Yeah.
Because otherwise. Yeah, it's, it's all.
You guys have to look at what he's proposing. Then our legal, if you want the legal to look at it, they would look at it and then we would have to approach the county. How many, how many communities did you find that were under the proposal that you?
In this, in the state, there is technically one community that's, one CSD that's actually operating a similar system for, for bonds. Acting as standing as a record company. Uh, what, this thing?
Yeah.
Of your plan?
I.
Can you call to them or? Can you guys just get ready now?
Well, this is.
Thank you.
Oh, you want it?
Yeah.
Could you please send it to me so I can send it out to you guys?
Please.
The right way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, man. Then maybe at the next board meeting, since you guys haven't had time to read it, we can go and ask staff to make enough legal look at it.
The, the. January, right? What do we have on our plate for January?
I got right now thirteen items, but the waste goes.
It's not gonna happen in January.
Well, in January, what you'd be doing is just providing consensus to move forward with.
Legal, legal.
I understand, which is going to require some discussion on top of thirteen other items.
A lot of the thirteen items are basically.
You know what?
Basically a.
I'm not gonna be board president, so. Board president.
He goes like this.
Yeah. But I just, I looked at the way I was. Um, but I just, I look at the way all this community's growing and the way our taxes are set up and, I mean, the more I dug into it, I went, that's holy smokes. It, it had. And so.
Anything else?
You guys will have your board practice tonight or tomorrow morning for the twenty, or the nineteenth meeting?
Look pretty, they're bones.
Uh, there's a few things in there.
Four items.
We got major budget adjustments. That's your basis, big.
Is that gonna take a long time? Should I just?
Just tell us, sure.
You would go and make sure.
There's that.
Was there, is there a lot? I mean, is it?
No, I, I wouldn't call it a lot. There, there's some.
No, that's pretty vague.
Just say yes.
I'm picking up my hammer.
It'll be fine.
So there's not a lot, but it'll make you, two cups of coffee, you'll be through it.
Where were we?
I think it's laid out pretty clear.
Anybody else have?
Yeah. We need to do the times.
Last time, John. His last adjournment. Don't get teary-eyed on us.
Thanks, sir.